Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you once again just thanking you for all your many blessings of life, Lord. I pray that you'll be with this body of missionaries as they give me take on the business at hand. Lord, I pray you'll be with my family as I travel back from a ballgame in a little while, Lord. This is only one of few that I've missed, but, Lord, I pray that you'll be with them. Be with each and every one of our children, Lord. God, I pray that you'll be with Commissioner Pickenger's family. And God, I pray that you will bless our nation and our land. And God is always, be with my little bloodied land and heaven's native. Praise in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright guys, we're being requested to go into executive council with our attorney, Mr. Logan. So we're going over to this other, guys will just sit in time, we'll be back in a few hopefully.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Oh, do we need to do real call first? I'm sorry, let's do real call first. Oh, do that first. We're all here. There's Ms. Rorke, Ann Bowman, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden here, Kelly Morgan here, John Pickenger, and Samantha Trent here. Now we'll exit. Thank you.
Chair, this is important, the commission meeting, I believe, would do this now.
Thank you.
Correct.
Alright, is everybody back? Alright, we're gonna resume back to the meeting. Uh, we need to do the approval of previous minutes. Any discussion? Real call. Pete Parker, Stan Donovan, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden, Kelly Morgan, John Pickenger, Samantha Trent. Alright, approval of the reports of offices, special to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Real call. Pete Parker, Stan Donovan, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden, Kelly Morgan, John Pickenger, Samantha Trent. Alright, we've got approval of notaries. Uh, we've got Candace Bates, we've got Johanna Harden, that's with a C. We have Reno Wimberly, and we have Brittany Smith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
John Wick, Mosh second. Alright, any discussion? Real call. Pete Parker, Stan Donovan, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden, Kelly Morgan, John Pickenger, Samantha Trent. Alright, uh, do we need to move budget amendments to the bottom, or are we good to go right now?
I think we're doing it.
Okay, alright. If you will notice thirty-three through thirty-eight, uh, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, all are gonna be in our general. Uh, the first one, uh, thirty-three is, uh, line thirty-nine thousand for fifteen thousand, going into line five-one-nine-zero-zero-three-nine-nine for fifteen thousand. This is general admission contract services. Uh, the second one is five-four-four-two-zero-three-three-four, and it's for rescue maintenance agreement for three-seventy. And then five-four, five-four-four-two-zero-for-three-seventeen is data processing for three-seventy. We then have four-three-three-nine-three for probation fees of eighty-seven-seventy-two into five-three-nine-one-zero-dash-five-zero-nine at eighty-seven-seventy-two. Uh, we then have five-six-five-hundred-one-ninety-six for library in-service at five-hundred. Then we have five-six-five-five-hundred-four-ten for the custodian, which is six hundred dollars of the library. Four-eight-six-ten for donations for sixteen-fifty-five-nine. Uh, the travel is going into, uh, five-six-five-hundred-three-fifty-five at eleven-hundred. And then the other supplies are going, of twelve hundred dollars is going into four-ninety-nine. And then the instructor instructional support for four-two-nine is four-hundred-and-fifty-nine for a total of two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine. We have, uh, from the Sheriff's Department, uh, four-four-five-seventy in donations of ten thousand, and it's going into, uh, the first five-four-one-one-ten-three-thirty-eight. It's maintenance and repair at five thousand. Five-four-two-three-zero-at-four-ten is custodian at two thousand. Five-four-two-three-zero-at-four-ninety-nine is other supplies at three thousand for a total of ten thousand. Thirty-eight is also from the Sheriff's Department, um, going into one-on-one-five-four-two-three-zero-three-four-zero, coming out of, sorry, fifteen thousand, uh, for medical and dental, five-four-two-three-zero-at-four-ninety-nine, other supplies at three thousand. Uh, five-four-one-one-zero-at-three-fifty-five is travel for forty-six dollars. Five-four-one-one-zero-four-two-five is it fuel for ten thousand. Five-four-one-one-zero-four-three-one is office supplies at thirty-five-twenty-one for a balance of twenty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. And then it went into five-four-two-three-zero-four-two-two for food for the total of twenty-eight-zero-eight-one and one cent. Uh, we have one out of thirty-nine thousand for, and there's a limited fund amounts of two thousand into five-six-nine-hundred-five-nine-nine for parks and rec at West Oak for two thousand. Uh, we have four-six-one-forty for aging programs of eight thousand. Goes into fifty-six-three-hundred-three-ninety-nine, a senior other contractor, is eight thousand. Um, then we have three-four-five-one-five earmark for data processing at two thousand. It's going into five-two-five-hundred-seven-oh-nine for the two thousand. Uh, then we have the election workers at five-one-five-hundred-one-nine-three for two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Five-one-five-hundred-one-oh-six for the election at two-seventy. Alright, that's all for the general one-on-one. Do we have any discussion that's come along?
I would like to ask a couple questions. On number thirty-nine, our parks and recs, are they gonna give that to us too? Does every time we?
We've got Diana here.
Well, I have electrical problems out at the ball field, and this is to fix some boxes and stuff out here on my light poles that are rotted, that's been up in ninety-six. We've replaced some of them. Thought we were maybe okay, but the other night, the breaker tripped and they went off. And these boxes are gonna be fixed, so. I haven't talked to anybody in basin, if, you know, they needed anything. This is just a need that I, I need to get the lights fixed desperately right now.
I just thought I'd ask, because we always make sure you guys get it.
We usually do, that's the truth. And, you know, if you do this, and maybe when we can come up with something else, but, uh, right now, I've got problems. I have, I have water problems, we've got them fixed. Uh, this has not been a great year at the ball field, when we turned on the water and, and I spent, and we, I did buy the sign. Uh, had the tree cut, 'cause it was throwing in the lights, painted the dugouts. And it's just been a rough year, and I've spent my, uh, three thousand dollars, and I need two more thousand dollars to get those lights fixed. I need a new budget. We can like up the money? I need fire, I have killer, anybody wanna donate any? I'm serious.
I'll take it.
I get a lot of my money out there at that park, I don't mind and do stuff, but, I'm, I'm just like.
They're everywhere on my field.
Kelly, don't go.
I know, they're everywhere, aren't they?
They're everywhere, I'm not kidding you. And, I mean, it, it just is a lot of money. And the more, we're getting a lot more people out the parks, I talked to y'all this before, y'all saw the other night out there. We're packed out there, it's lovely, I'm thrilled, we're packed. But with that comes more garbage, here's my garbage man.
We'll make it lower stakes.
We, really, I'm, I'm serious, it's gonna be, uh, the more people you have, the more trash you have, the more, uh, I mean, how about toilet paper, y'all, I'm just being honest with you. And paper towels, and, you know, it just, I like keeping the park good, though. But, as y'all, maintenance takes money, yeah. And John Hoyt, he puts his money in there, he's plumber, he's plumber, we're electrician. But, uh, but I got major electrical right now, though, and that's, that's why I'm here asking for the two thousand dollars. It really is.
I have another question. On number thirty-eight, why didn't he decide to take that out of his fuel? This is the one before, he got a ten thousand dollar donation.
Did what, what?
I didn't put it down, and it was fuel money.
But, uh, I believe he stuck that donation line that comes in for, uh, his robe and, uh, his robe and.
The one before, though, he got a ten thousand dollar donation. He put it into different ones, not fuel, but on the next one, it come out of fuel. 'Cause, I mean, if he goes over that, we have to give that to him. 'Cause we just can't leave our debt list without gas.
He's probably gonna, I would imagine, a projection of savings that much as you've been at empty shore on eighteen. And then, next year.
So we should probably cut it in the budget?
Yeah, if he don't cut that, he's hired by July first, and we can cut that line a bit. But I'd say that ten thousand is moving on empty shore, I mean, Southern County right now.
But we all know, he needs it, we have to give it.
Any other steps left?
Y'all have a question, on, uh, number thirty-six. It's showing the library travel, eleven hundred dollars.
Now hers is a one that we cut.
Yeah, hers is a big one.
It's not being cut.
'Cause she travels.
There's one, all of them are making it there for two.
Yeah, and she is moving within her department.
So we are paying her for travel inside the camp?
Always hell, but. Real call.
So you're all good? All good.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Pete Parker, Stan Donovan, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden, Kelly Morgan, John Pickenger, Samantha Trent. The next budget amendment is on the car fund, one-eighty-nine, three-four-six-seven-five committed funds of twenty grand to the five-four-one-one-seven-one-eight vehicle, which is also twenty grand. One-eighty-nine, yeah, it says CCP projects car fund.
That's Sheriff's录入's progress.
Is that one of the ones you emailed? Sorry, bringing my emails, I printed it from my email, sorry.
This is with the, uh, special fund setup, normally used for tow cars.
This is the car fund that he can only get. You guys need coffee? I can pass my mail, we can back to the table. Okay, alright. We got a motion in the second, I guess.
Talking to the first.
Second. Any more discussion? Real call. Pete Parker, Stan Donovan, Greg Brooks, Danny Carver, Debbie Davis, Mosh Davis, Kristy Harden, Kelly Morgan, John Pickenger, Samantha Trent. Alright, next time is our budget amendment on Polk County Food Service for the high school. The county school board, um, the lunch payments. For the, uh, school. Which one does this come out as? It says transfer from one forty-one.
That and the other, it's third service, one forty-three, one forty-four.
It's one?
One forty-three is third service.
Right, there's a transfer there, I think.
There he is. I don't know. And it says transfers in, two-hundred thousand dollars.
It's one forty-one.
It's one forty-one, they're general.
Yes. I just figured maybe to that's, you know, one forty-three, is that what it was, one forty-one?
Well, yeah, right there's the person.
Diane.
I know, every night, I'll see it all.
Was that what, was they moving two-hundred thousand from one forty-one to one forty-three?
Well, I see the transfer from one forty-one. But I don't see where it's going into one forty, yeah. One forty-three's not listed on here at all. So it's like they're showing a transfer out, but they're not showing the other side of it to where it's going, unless I'm looking at it wrong.
Well, it is, she'll show one forty-three, it's going in the first. She might just let it off, I don't know.
It should show fund one forty-one, right, and one forty-three.
Well, if they're transferring, is that why she's doing it, or is she just moving it?
I see the transfer from the two-hundred thousand to one forty-one.
Oh, do you?
But I don't see what funds it's going in.
Show me where you're looking. Transfer from one forty-one.
There's nothing on here that says, um, it's going to. I mean, I see it hundred and, here, but it doesn't say what. Maybe we can table it until next month, get somebody. You can make those statements. Let's table this budget amendment till next month, and get somebody.
I said we're.
Yeah, alright, so we're gonna table this amendment till next month, and we'll get a hold of them. Now, the room assignment for the county clerk's office in Duxton. Exactly, I think, so I'll wait for. Okay, we'll come back to it. Did you all have the building?
Yeah, we're, we're still working out the details on the room assignment, but there we go. Uh, somebody come from the state to make sure that we stay in compliance with regulations for the senior center. And so we're gonna have a meeting with them up there. Is anybody here on this issue for room assignment? Community Center or Duxton?
Is that where you're gonna put the tag office, right?
Yeah.
That is the community center, right? Well, we gotta have one somewhere.
We do. And, uh, since we sold the, the hospital where Jackie's at now, the building they have, she has sixty days to vote and get out, so we're having to move her back to the community center. And, uh, so that's the reason we're working on the room assignment. And like I said, uh, we don't wanna interfere with anything, uh, with the senior center from any state in compliance, so we got somebody coming from the state to give us some guidance, so that we can't, can't do there. So, we're gonna table this till next month, but that's the reason I asked anybody who's here on this issue.
Well, there wasn't a lot of interference before, was there?
We were able to resolve it. We were able to resolve it without having to move Jackie. We put her in building eight, you know, but that's sold now, um, so, so she has to have an office to operate it there.
And it has to be big enough for your machine.
'Cause we're getting a driver's license.
We'll put in the driver's license for new.
We're the only driver's license used to be.
And this is very important for the newspaper, contrary to the rumors, it got started on eighteen. There's absolutely no interference with senior center. This is a temporary shift, no services will be lost from Jackie's office or the senior center. Yeah, they have petition, somebody told we were shutting down the senior center. But nothing's gonna be affected, a little few things might be in a different room, but this will help us through Jackie's office and, uh, senior center. There are one-hundred percent people on these teams, and it's temporary, we'll get something done with the new, uh, court bill. But nothing will be cut out, uh, everybody, business as usual.
Thank you, uh, but still have to offer to get the driver's license.
Can you also put in there? Can we also put in there that it's not personal? Because it's, it was a disaster on Tuesday.
They was petition going around saying the commission's gonna shut down the senior center and all that, and nothing should have been further from the truth, and they were, we just shifting around a little bit to make it work for, you know, everybody to get their license tags, and, uh, you know, wait, it worked to do everything.
And she can have her room back, or we can record it. Alright, so we'll talk more about that later.
I get the bag.
Alright, so, Mr. Morgan.
Alright, so I'll put this on here, it's just for discussion purposes, because I've got this. Got to address any miscommunication or, I can say, language that hasn't started. So since last meeting, I was called a couple different times to say that, um, a commissioner had been going around saying that when I set up this fund, one-eighty-eight, it was not set up for a project capital projects fund. So I just wanted to address that, see if we need to talk about it. Because I want to get three notes. On the first one, it says capital projects fund one-eighty-eight in the title of the resolution. Two, it states it in the body that I read to everybody, that not we need to look on it. And three, um, the funds are numbered for a reason, and they're part of a group of different categories. So funds one-seventy-one through one-eighty-nine is all considered capital projects. So that is why it's one-eighty-eight. So if we need to discuss anything, let's hash it out now, 'cause I don't like being hangovered by dogs when I'm not trying to do anything but help the county. So if we need to talk about it, let's talk about it, if not, we can go.
Well, that's me, uh, I did talk to a couple commissioners when we were talking in general. And when I went back and listened to some of the discussion, the main thing that was pointed out when we looked at the money was that it was too hard to keep up with, with it being hanging, and within, in the, under, during the fund balance. Even though the priest had set it up that way, in accordance with what the state had told us. And, and that was the real thing that I got out of it, was the fact it was too hard to keep up with. And part of the fund balance, we're gonna move it to one-eighty-eight, not that we need to do it as a capital project.
Well, we had a very lengthy discussion about the capital projects and the fact that every building in the county is falling apart, just about. I mean, we all had that conversation, we all agree on it. For we're getting one-time money that's gonna equal a million dollars, why would we not set that apart? To do some of the repairs, because when we blow through the one-time money, which has been done in the past and used to balance the budget, then you have to take out debt to maintain your buildings. We all was in agreement, it was a very lengthy discussion. Walter even contacted me for the resolution from the paper. So there, there wasn't nothing being glazed over.
I believe it's glazed over, but like I said, what I got out, and went back and listened, was the fact that the main reason to move it is because it's so hard to keep up with.
It's a lot easier to keep up with it when it's in a separate fund.
When you take it out, and you gotta get this to the fund balance, you don't have a choice, and it comes out when you.
No, but the first thing, you guys used care back money to balance the budget in twenty-two. So why would you want to put one-time money in something that's been used, being bundled in with all this extra money? Do something with it that's easily traceable, we voted on it, drop it, and move on.
I apologize.
Alright, uh, please, your trans.
Um, so mine's gonna go with Robbie's, number thirteen. Um, but I, we have Hunter, Hunter Raven here, I know most of you guys would know him. Um, we had some documents from the county that were, um, were the deeds. Sure deeds, like the oldest deeds in our county. And, um, we are, we wanna start this records committee, so that way, when more are found that there probably is, they're taken care of, and they have a designated place. And I know that Walter wanted to do that as well, and scanneld them for us, so, um, what we're gonna do is, uh, Robbie's got a resolution for that, so that way, none of this stuff is gonna happen again. Um, there was a whole ordeal the other day, and we wanna avoid that again. Uh, those records are now in Bo's office, I think. Yeah, Bo, they in your office?
Yes, that's how.
Uh, but Robbie, if you wanna read your resolution.
And, and just to clarify on that, just so everybody understands, um, those deeds that were set out were set out years ago, right Walter? And somebody picked them up, there was another official that said, "We'll be done." And they were actually set out here on the courthouse lawn, to be thrown away. And so I'm grateful that Ms. Presswood came by and picked them up for that reason. But they were hurt loose or got rid of, and there was never a resolution passed by the county legislative body to get rid of them. So legally, technically, they still belong to the county. And so whenever they were discovered, it got so bad that I had, I, I had a guy calling me by crying because he was threatening to be arrested, when he just helped to save the town. And, uh, I told him I'm gonna make sure he had his best honey buns if he went to jail. But anyway, it was, it was quite a fiasco for those of us that were involved in that. So this will be resolution, tell me up please.
One-three-one. A resolution to establish a Polk County Records Committee. Whereas Tennessee Co-Unitedate Act of Ten in Chapter Seven requires that the record of permanent value be preserved and made available for public inspection. And whereas the Secretary of the State of Tennessee, through the Tennessee State Library and Archives advises that the most effective and economical means of archiving is public benefit with respect to the keeping of the older local records is through the administration of local government archives. Now therefore, be resolved by the county legislative body of Polk County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session at Polk County, Tennessee, that section one, the county archives of Polk County is hereby established as a department of county government to operate according to the rules and the regulations set forth by the Polk County Public Records Committee.
The Polk County Public Records Committee shall consist of seven members. So as I read off the titles, then I'll put their names to it to go into record. For Polk County, the county clerk, which will be Ms. Rogers, the register of deeds, which will be Mr. Walter, the general sessions judge, which will be Ms. Towns, the county historian, which will be Ms. Presswood, the county archives, which will be Walter Bates, and a member of the county legislative body, which will be Keith Barker, and a member at large, which will be Hunter Rex. The county archives, the county legislative body members, and the member at large are appointed by the county executive and approved by this county committee. The county archivist is a volunteer physician that will oversee the preservation, disposal of all inactive permanent records and manage the day-to-day activities of the archive room according to the rules set forth by the public records committee. The archive room is room three oh-one at the Polk County courthouse and shall be the responsory for inspecting permanent records of the county that are no longer required by the county offices for current operation. And county government officers shall transfer inactive records to the archives upon the completion of their retention time set forth by the public records committee. Only the public records committee can determine if records are to be preserved or destroyed. Section four, the archives shall hold tight dominion and control over these said records in trust for the citizens and the government of Polk County and shall commit no arms nor laws of the record to the private citizens and the government of the county for the property and the benefit of said records. Section five, the archives shall keep and maintain a said record and shall make them available for public inspection according to the rules and the regulations set forth by the county public records committee. Section, section six, the archives is eligible but may not necessarily receive appropriated funds each year by the county legislative body for the necessary costs to administer the said records. The archives may change and receive copying fees for the copying of the documents in the archiving according to a fee schedule approved by the county public records committee. Any revenue generated by such a fee shall be turned over to the trustees to be deposited in the county's general fund but shall be earmarked for expenditure solely for the procurement of archive supplies and services that will help to preserve and protect the records of the county and other valuable historical documents entrusted to the care of the archives. Section eight, the archives may, with the concurrence from the county public records committee, accept donations of the historical materials that are of historic value and document these historical experiences for the citizens of Polk County. The appointments of the public record committee, and I do hereby appoint those following that I, that I've already appointed, which would be county commissioner Keith Barker to serve on the public records committee. Uh, would be also Hunter Raven and Walter Bates. So the public, so the Polk County clerk, register deeds, general sessions, county historian are all the faculty appointees. According to the state guidelines, all appointees shall serve at the pleasure of the county legislative body. This resolution shall be effective upon its passage and approval and the public welfare requiring it adopted only as Thursday, March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Go call. Keith Parker? Shane Goodman? Gregor? Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Warren?
Yes.
John Kippenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper? Land in sale on sixty-four.
Uh, we discussed this land on sixty-four up in Duck Town a couple of times at the building committee meeting. One time we actually went there to look at the property to see if we had a good site to build a courthouse. We decided it was not a good site to build a courthouse because of the concrete land. And it would take too much dirt work basically to build there. And then the next time we discussed trying, trying to do something to get sold, cause I'd be used for mind changing this to build a courthouse on it or to sell property, it's definitely important. So we would like to get some more to sell that property. So, and the whole that seemed to be is that there was no permits connected to sixty-four. So I'm making much of it with a flat of permits connected to sixty-four. So we can.
That house.
I don't, I don't know if there's a house or a flat.
There shouldn't be, not on that.
Might as well try.
All they can do is turn the plan.
As long as I talk to Beal Blough, he had one that last week. He told me, he had paperwork to say where's an access to that property, state that give him an access. He said he could take me down and show me where he put the ground.
I, I've seen that, but, but the thing that said that was a provisionary because it was assumed at that point in time that there was gonna be something for the, but without that actually being done, it's something for the state to see that there was gonna be something for the benefit of the county tax that the state would not. So I mean, like I said, they told me before that if it was something for the county, like a courthouse or something other that benefited the county, that they would put that easement in off of sixty-four. But it's my understanding also that if it was for something like subdivision or anything like that, that they would not put it in. But we can apply for it.
Tony, this tells them.
But it's the money to go towards courthouse. If it's sale. So it's benefiting the county, it's opposite of it.
I said that last time when we talked about it, that if it benefited the county, trust sales of the land, it couldn't work that way.
It has to go towards, which I.
Alright, we've got a motion with a second.
Go ahead.
We've got any other discussion? Go call.
Everyone will try to sell.
We have to, do we have to bid it out?
Take open, you have to. That was gonna be my next question, you all, Eric, to go ahead and start that. We can do it like we've done the last couple county tax sales. Uh, that's where we do a round of open bid and then sell bid with a ten percent increase and we go back after bidding. The only way that it can be sold. Real estate or anything like that, it'd have to go through the IED board. You'd have to do the work, something with them for them to go through.
Did we not figure out that a realtor was a specialized services and we give them a bid process? Like just pick out the one that doesn't pay?
According to Eric, because once again, as much as, 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 as you get this over, that was his. And whenever I talked to Eric about that, Eric says that the county could not go through a realtor, realtor through a private party transaction. If it's county property, it has to be sold off at a lower auction. And that's what I explained to Judge Blough because it's not what we need as much. It does if it gets into a realtor's hands, and everybody knows that. But we don't, we can only sell it the legal way that we can sell it, but if that's what you all want to do, we can get Eric started on that.
So should we start on, no one, if we don't get this permit? I mean, we don't need to pay Eric for doing that, I mean, wasted his time.
Or you think the way it's gonna have, it's gonna have to be sold anyway. It don't matter if it has the, the entrance will make a big difference.
I know, I, I mean, I know.
Well, there's another way to get food, it's coming down eighteen and those, it's the road that's up, the old, uh, cutting across. But there shouldn't be a right of way off of that.
Londonville Road, it's on Londonville. But it is behind, uh, Lynch Springs Gate.
That church is behind.
But there is that way, I didn't say it's, but this would be more attractive than that.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's either way, I mean, you know.
It's not a problem, as long as I.
Thirty, thirty-seven.
That's just it, it's, it's my understanding that if it, county property, the way it's set up, it has to sell for a courthouse like it is.
But he doesn't need, he needs to wait about advertising if we do get.
Oh yeah, it'll take, it'll take.
Yeah, and that way, when it's advertised, it can say it's got a J sub to sixty-four.
It, it may be pretty quick, cause like I said, up to the T dot in the past. T dot would not give the approval until they could see something from the county that the county was going to do, whether it would be in spot in the courthouse or anything else. So if it was something that's gonna be beneficial to the county, it would gonna be pretty quick.
So then we'd see that when we try to sell it, I'm getting.
The benefit of the county. I don't know, I, I don't, like I said, I don't know, I know that I, I've talked with them in the past, I can only, to evade this mission, I've been told.
Should have access to sixty-four.
Let's, let's try, let's try the permit and then see what happens. And I think it would bring more money if we had permit connected to it.
Now, if we section it off in five acres or something, we're gonna say.
If you all, if you sell it five acres or something. Just like what we done with the garbage pit, so you all can determine how you want that done.
I don't think it'd work good up there, you'd see, you don't know what way plates or what, or something, it would give a lot of money. And it's other areas.
Well, I didn't know about five acres at a time and then as a whole come back and sell it.
We'll figure it out, I think you're gonna make a permit.
You're making my point, just get permit at this point.
Yeah, buy for permit. The next sixty-four.
Two seconds, you're all good with that. Yeah, Danny, you're good with that. Any more discussion? Let's roll call it. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Goodman?
Yes.
Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden? Yes. Kelly Warren?
Yes.
John Kippenberg?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Harper? Courthouse.
More on the courthouse. We, the building committee just met a few times at the courthouse. Like I said, we looked at that land on sixty-four and decided it wasn't a good site to build. We also looked at the property where the BMX or OGMX track is over there, and I think that's an excellent place. I think there's enough room there. Uh, we talked about getting some survey work done, just to make sure where our lines are, but I think there's enough room. Uh, did you get?
I did not, I haven't gotten, or got them, and, and they, but it seems they do have them.
So we, we do need to get that survey done, if we need to do anything on the money for the survey or what we talked about before, I wanted to bring that up.
Do you need to vote to do this, or?
We discussed.
Keep on bucks.
We talked about it, and I mean, I don't know how much it would cost, if there's something else, whoever I get, if I can handle it, so we can make it work.
We're about getting planned.
Well, that was, that was the next thing, is that we need, we need to get some help with the design and layout of the building because we're gonna have to meet all fire codes, it's gonna have to be ADA compliant, and we're gonna have to meet all the regulations for the court. So, uh, I feel like we need to get some help with the layout and design. So we need to, we need to outtake some money for that.
You ready to get, we're gonna go make that, sir?
Only we need on eight, that lady about that. Maybe something, uh, we get anybody interested, come, interested in drawing it up, designing it up. Do they make on eight, make about the same thing, and on get the ball rolled on that, on eight.
We do, but.
I think the AOC has some general guidelines you got to go through if you build a structure. It's what.
For the court?
Yeah, the ministry obviously. I believe they have some general guidelines on it, watching out now, you know, building structures.
Well, you know, we, like I said, we've got, we've got to meet all the fire codes and it'd be ADA compliant. And we'll have to pour pads and stuff building on it. We've always talked about a metaphor, too, if anybody, if anybody's quick now, wants to know what, what we're looking at. None building, we'll have to have the, before we pour the pads, we'll have to have all the funding and everything stepped out. You know, so we need some, we need some help getting, getting all that stuff here.
Where are you looking at the building?
Um, it's near the community center, uh, on the backside of ball fields. Karen is still on the crossy behind the ball field in there.
You build a bike trail.
The BMX track.
BMX track.
I thought you talked about that, ain't nothing, ain't nothing, so who's moving some of the fireworks?
Well, we've had, we've had some discussions about that, and we, uh, were tossing around the idea about leasing it. Did you, did you talk to anybody much on that?
I don't talk to you, right?
Okay, was.
Sorry, tell your thing.
Yeah, I know.
The show we done our new building, we put that out for bid three times to get that fixed, and then we got a beat. About one time did we get beat by them. So we had to give attention to it. I don't know if everybody does boats or so far behind or, you know, putting in new boats, but, but what was it, three times we put that out for bid?
Yeah, but it's not like being like, like seven, eight hundred thousand.
Well, that's the first one, and that's the last one.
And after that, it's the.
We retired the boat, and there we got a beat on.
For repairs, yes, there had been three times it's turned out to be a property repair.
So, like I said, we.
Ready to be, used to putting down those.
Thinking that, we tossed around the idea about leasing, somebody.
Leasing some others, it'd be someplace.
We haven't found anybody to.
There's him, there.
There's anybody else in the house?
Right, nobody took us up on that.
It was a little one for last time.
She left, she left.
Wait, wait.
What time she leave? She give you time?
Oh yeah, and they, he's on eight, he's on twenty-fifth at six o'clock.
Of March or?
April.
April.
Oh, pretty bad. Yeah, she's, so she, the reason why is that she had to go in for a procedure. I know Keith had called me about it, I tried to contact her yesterday, she's actually having to have a procedure done. And so it will be, she'll be released and be able to come back home the twenty-fifth at six o'clock after twenty-sixth. And she said that if that was too early for someone to work, she, she will be there and, and stay later on. And she's actually with, that's through southeast Tennessee building district, triple-A, the area aging district.
Well, we have other, we need to, we have other on that.
Yeah.
Before then.
Eighteen, yes. And this is the fourth third of that month.
And it's gonna be on the twenty?
Four twenty-ten.
So we just wanna try to move everything and then see if we're in compliance?
Well, you know, it's also sort of sixty to ninety days, and I talked with Doug on that about how, of course, we're closing. It's not looking like this is, that, that paperwork's gonna be closed until April. We're not gonna get it for March, and so with that being the case, it's gonna be the end of the month. So that way we don't have to go back and program re-inhering, so Duck Town's waiting for the end of that next month. So even if Duck Town has something right now, it's gonna be end of April.
So another question, should we just go ahead and move our commission meeting to the third year? So we can do it after that, so we can just move it instead of tabling it again?
If that's what you all want to do. Like I said, that was the first thing, because Chris has had a procedure done, and she'll be back to work that week. She said that she thought she'd feel safe traveling the night with it being later for her.
It would keep us from tabling it again and spending.
I mean, that's fine, if that's what you all, you know, so choose to do. Or you could go ahead and host your commission meeting and then just alternate, just revisit it, and then come back on that Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday, Friday, June.
If that works for you.
It's a part of it.
Yay.
You could even have, you could even have the commission meeting after we get done making the progress, because that's what you all, you all can turn that to not a commission meeting, how long you're expecting?
Walk there, you can do it.
We're just gonna hold off on anything right now for courthouse. Yeah, do we need to do anything with this permit, do we need to vote to do this? Do that, alright, okay, alright. Anything else on that?
Now, that's one, one thing, uh, Keith, would you want to get everything together for, to go out, four bids for my, your, for that?
I think we're gonna need.
What happens, huh?
Go ahead and get a start, and they'll set with the license authorized.
I've heard.
Yeah.
What's it come out of?
Well, they got pockets coming out of the sale of the hospital, it's already fixed up.
But we don't have that in our pocket, our hands yet on our deals, so we might have to take that and unbalance and put it back.
Put it back.
We need to make the one, but I guess that'd have to be bid out too, won't it?
And all one I could think of, and it just because I've been working the past couple months, right? I don't know who else I've been with. I don't know who else I've ever been with, engineering, not to take them, but Indy I know. And I'm sure we can contact them and they could, they could, cause they come to school board meetings every month and just give more, just eleven.
I think it's something that we're gonna have to have, we can do it now.
Oh, God, we gotta have some kind of. Some plan.
I mean, if you all, have us work on that.
I was making most of my day to that.
I see.
I'm saying, hold on now. From where I'm at. To do, to cut bids for the engineering.
I need to do a.
For the, for the bids, for the bids for the courthouse, for the. Our integrity.
Our integrity.
Help them establish. Do you make the motion?
I'm ready to move.
Mark for second, mark for second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Danny Carter?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Smush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Martin?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pickenjohn?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, why are you talking? You wanna just talk about the annual stuff too? You're doing such a good job.
In our meeting, we decided to wait on that, so we're not gonna make it back.
We're gonna, we're gonna table and do some more discussion in April.
Yes.
We're looking at some things, so, um. We're doing a lot of tabling this time. All right, Detective Hatcher. Floyd Weston. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Westpoke, we are also tabling, just a little FYI on that. They have, um, been talking to Bradley County. Bradley County's about two new fire trucks, I don't know if it's engines, two new trucks. Uh, and they have been talking about buying the two old trucks that they replaced and bringing them here because they're running out of parts to fix the others. Uh, they told them thirty thousand for both trucks, which is a still of a deal. They're still talking with the lawyers to see if they can just out and out right buy or they have to put them out for bids. Since it's county to county, they're, so they're working on that. So Steve didn't have an answer to come to us and talk to us about it.
I think around that, I think they're clean.
And that's what there is.
Right, they're still working.
Oh, yeah, it's just because Bradley County has the money and they got two new ones.
That's what we need those plans.
Yes.
We had some violations to have, you know, for the other day.
Yes. Well, you got trucks that are forty years old and they're literally taking pieces off the ones in the back to put on big trucks, so. And these are, these are mentioned on your trucks.
I see.
That's on the.
We're tabling, yeah, cause we don't have that in writing. Quit trying to make it. Yeah, there's something that, there's a, there's a, something you can do around that. That's what they were telling them, that's what.
When, when you got special trucks like patrol cars, fire trucks and all, you're doing county to city, county or state, and then going to state, uh, y'all just. They've got, or use cars very loud.
You know, it's happening. And what the fire department was afraid of, they were afraid that if it came out and they couldn't eat it, then by lady so long. And so I think with John's motion talking about was if it is approved by their attorney and our attorney, and it can be done, just to go ahead and allocate.
Allocate.
Thirty thousand dollars and if it comes through next Wednesday.
All right, I'll say that, I'll say. We're not saying, we're gonna vote on it right now.
They, they, and we.
I think we've got here. Where are you at the time?
By that.
Yeah, thirty nine thousand.
It'll say up to thirty nine thousand or thirty?
Thirty, it's coming out thirty nine thousand.
Okay. Robin, you're crazy. Uh, did, numbers, okay.
It was thirty thousand on court.
Yes, it was probably thirty thousand.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed thirty.
Thirty thousand just up to thirty thousand if approved, if approved by.
Yeah.
None of your attorneys.
For both units.
Yes, for both units.
And by the, for itself, it's one for twenty.
Three hundred ninety thousand.
Well, Keith, we can take the one. We'll take one. All right, roll call. Annie Massey, your session. Shane Bowman? Greg Bruce? Danny Carter?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Smush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Martin?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pickenjohn?
Yes.
Yes. All right, now, your turn.
All right, so we made an executive decision and advised by our attorney. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to reject all bids that were turned in. And then to go back out to bid in accordance to the resolution that was passed in. Twenty seven seventy.
My good luck. Second.
Everybody good to that? Any discussion needed? All right, roll call. Oh, sorry.
Does the unit put it back out?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, and it will be put out to bid. And it will be brought before this commission in the April meeting, which will be on April the eighteenth. Bids will be given back in March.
And Monday's Friday.
By the eighth, well, clock, and there will be a bid open to follow the bid now.
And what about the bids that you're holding now?
I was told to place those bids back into the hands of the bid.
Been there, bitter.
And so I'm gonna do that after we get done with it. That way we don't have to hold on to them. And that way we're not obligated, somebody can't say anybody. According to.
Your session? Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Danny Carter?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Smush Davis?
Yes.
Christie Martin?
Yes.
All right, rally update.
I cannot apologize, I don't know information on the rally. Uh, that's because with the meeting, just another that, uh, Christie was there via phone. I see Philip here, Philip waiting hands, everybody can see who Philip here already is, the Forest Service. And I'd like to be on record and state, although I know that in past Polk County government and the Forest Service has not got along. I appreciate Philip, he meant. He has kept me updated on everything that has been going on with the rally. Not only him, I've had a lot of residents, I'm sorry if my blood pressure gets poor, but it's got the force where I can go to the ballgame. Because I have truths that have been told. If you don't care to quote that in papers, I would greatly appreciate it. At least, at the, yes, because at the event the other night, which Christie was there, Venus was calling, Philip had his representatives there and I got a brochure. It talks about how that there is an event June thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. And Philip can say yes or no, but they have a permit.
Right now, there is not a permit.
Are you gonna give one?
Excuse me, sir.
Are you gonna give them?
Right now, so the process from the Forest Service, they have requested a permit. We, we're looking at it through a category for exclusion, which is a level of the National Environmental Policy Act, which requires us to do environmental assessments. So our team is reviewing the proposal they have provided to us to see what kind of environmental effects that we can anticipate from that event. After that, there will be a public comment period, which we will consider that, and then we'll take all of that information in order to make a decision whether or not we're gonna issue a permit for it. So for me to say we are gonna have a permit or not at this point is pre-decisional.
It was also announced after meeting the other night, Boys and Girls Club, that the public comment section, which I see people in the crowd that know that I have messaged them and told them, no, it's not came out yet, it was not set aside until, was it Wednesday? Tuesday, the public comment.
So the public comment has not officially gone out yet. Our NIPA coordinator, NIPA planner, will be sending out the official public comment notice, um, in the next day or two, which will be for thirty days.
If, if the permit is given, will y'all, because they're opening up all the Jeep trails and motorcycle trails that's been shut down for years.
For the Polk County residents?
Polk County, well, for residents using natural.
Now, like, have they get all in place of huge.
I mean, I'm just asking, there's a serious question. I mean, if you will let these come through at Martin.
The, the proposal we're reviewing right now, and. The proposal that we're reviewing right now, what they've asked for is essentially utilizing open roads and trails. So none of the activities they're asking, they're gonna take place on roads that's not open, on the motor vehicle use map, which is the legal, oh, legal roads that are open for operation of motorized vehicles. So anything else will be something I, you'll be willing to talk about outside of this meeting, but it's outside the scope.
But even though they, I mean, the roads are open, these people are coming through at like a hundred or more. Isn't that what gonna mess up the habitat if they like?
So those are the kind of things that our team is evaluating right now. We've got fisheries biologists, abbotists, each of our specialists for all those specialties, our review and what would be the potential effects, as well as our roads engineers. Um, and part of the permit itself would require that the roads be maintained at whatever level they are now or are better, so. All that is being looked at by the team.
Them roads off. They put bad check on.
Is it, is it true that the rally?
Yeah, they sure are. Roads, worse road, not a, a.
Now, I'll be completely honest with you, there was so much talk right now, I couldn't hear exactly what you were asking.
The rally, or, is it true that they're putting money toward repairing the roads and the next, or is now updating them to get them ready for the race? I've heard that, is that true?
At this point, we do not have anything in place for them to do anything road wise in advance of the next, um, what they've requested for June. That is part of what will be evaluated as we move forward to decide if there was a permit or not. The one thing I will say is the race that was held in April of last year, after it was completed, um, the group that held the race did grade the road, um, that was utilized for that event.
Robert, what part is Chattanooga playing in this one? I know last time they were all over it, including, uh, what part of it is this?
Well, that was, that was talked about in the meeting, you know, how come to use a, a city like Chattanooga because of all the anticipation people are coming in. But on this brochure they have put out, it's, you know, they're expecting attendance in Polk County, fifteen hundred average spending per person, local business accommodations for three days is between a hundred and sixty-one and nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. And the total estimated economical impact of Polk County is two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. But what's important is, is to understand, there's nothing put in place. And I think Philip and I both found out probably within an hour of each other, because I called him and I was upset and then he was upset. Because we found out once it came out on the internet on January thirty first, if I'm not mistaken. And then there was nothing reviewed according to what Philip, there was no permits, nothing, nothing for June that they have advertised. Then I started getting social media tagged, I started getting things sent to me again on February the seventh, and when I called Philip, he was like, they just applied. They just got the request on the sixth, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Philip?
So the, the, the way the process works, um, they submitted a request for a permit. And we respond to that request as our team evaluated, it was gonna take us more than fifty hours of analysis time. By the code federal regulations, if we spend more than fifty hours analyzing a permit request such as this, we have to do what's called cost recovery. So we sent them a letter, um, for cost recovery and the information for that process. They responded to that, uh, that letter went out to them on November the eleventh of twenty twenty-three. They signed the agreement on January the first of twenty, Jan- January the nineteenth, sorry, twenty twenty-four. Um, I signed that agreement on February the sixth, twenty twenty-four, and they made the payment for cost recovery on February the fourteenth. When we received that payment for cost recovery on February fourteenth is when our team started to analyze the request for the June event.
What roads are they on that day if I'm not mistaken?
So the roads they've requested this time are, is a Star Mountain stage, which is, um, Forest Service Road two twenty and forty-four, which is Bullet Creek Road. A Lost Creek slash McFarland stage, which is, uh, one oh three Wado Flats and McFarland. A Sign of Branch stage, which is Forest Service Road sixty-seven Sign of Branch and the ninety-nine Road, Blue Ridge Road.
They're gonna do the Green Road and the Sun?
Hey, good admission. They, they really requested Indian Creek Road, which is three oh two road, and thirteen thirty-three, which is the Silco Ridge Road, and the Peabody Sheets stage, which is Forest Service Road two twenty-one. So that's what they've requested, again, and that's when our team is evaluating each of those roads and can make the decision if there are environmental factors or other factors that would, we'd put mitigations on or if we'd issue a permit.
That's the sign march that it is before.
And how long will those roads be shut down? Will they shut it down in what days before?
So that is a decision that we'll make if we, as we, if we issue a permit. Um, the, essentially that's a decision that I'll have to make. Um, and whether or not they are phased, it closed for just periods of time, which is what we were able to do at the event they did, um, in April of last year. Where there was times that folks could get through. We, obviously, if the event takes place, when they're operating at speed, folks can't be on that road, it's just not safe.
For what matters and stuff, they don't run for admirers, are they?
That's part of what the wildlife biologists and the folks that are on the team are analyzing.
They'll get out, buddy.
Right.
Hold on.
So if that one's in Pinnabar, who's gonna go get them, cause they'll know our, we don't have them anywhere.
But, you know, if you know this, Philip said, oh, February the seventh, and I quote, that there was a post money on social media. And the rally people had talked about that they had done the return agreement, it was costing us on February the seventh.
And it hadn't even went to us.
Well, Philip.
No, but February sixth is when I signed.
When he, when he signed it.
Yeah.
But it was, they, yeah, they sent it to the Forest Service.
Yeah.
But then what they do is, is they get on social media and all these platforms and they talk about it.
Now you're coming.
And then you've got residents that show up at the office and Chris will tell you, they'll show up at the office, want to know what's going on. And they're upset at us and they're upset at the Forest Service. And the Forest Service has been wonderful, they keep me informed. And we even, at one point in time, Christie had brought this out and she thought I was extremely upset with her, but I was mad because this is what, there's nothing that's set in stone. But it keeps getting advertised, like I was saying. And see, I was gonna say a copy of the color brochure.
Is it, is it still that same guy?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No, it's true, it, it's not the one from Chattanooga tourism. It's, it's a, it's true.
It's true.
I think I has a.
We're gonna have a public period, we're gonna have a public comment, in which will be advertised. And it will be stated, and we're trying to have it at the high school like it was last time, on April, on April the first. Not at the Boys and Girls Club, like Keith stated that.
But why, if they have a public meeting before that, we even know if they're gonna get a permit?
Well, technically, pretty wrong, Philip, but they don't really have to have the public meeting, is that correct?
Based upon this level of NIPA, the analysis that's required, since it's a categorical exclusion, it is not required. But based upon the compelling interests, um, locally and regionally from this, I've made the decision that we're gonna have a public comment for this.
Or your rights.
Yes, ma'am, but I, I, I do believe it's the right thing to do, that way we can make sure that we.
So that way all these questions can be answered by USA Row.
Yeah, I'd rather have a public comment instead of.
Mr. Brooks has got a couple of things.
Okay, great, come on.
No, we're good. I got two things on this, uh, as economic impact on Polk County. One, uh, as far as lodging, and it's not how you're saying this, I think contact and several out there, which, you know, that's our best competitive money we got in this county. It's, you know, the, that faction tour is a ministry, it's year after year after year. We'd like to get more out of them, but they do contribute to our camp, you know, every year. Uh, they might mention to me that, you know, June is one of our biggest months, and we've got nowhere to grow here in lodging, because they are booked up solid through RAC. You know, all the motels, all the cabins, you know, so that puts a huge dent in that two hundred and forty-one thousand, because there's nothing to go above what they've already done. That's the first thing. Second of all, uh, the two hundred and forty-one thousand, that is the craziest number. What they do is, one, you know, this guy, he won't sit out in the public like it's the best thing he's ever been. the best thing he's ever been, Pope County's gonna get two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Well, nothing can be part of it, and the truth, for example, uh, they, uh, you know, they figure what a family spends as far as walking into a restaurant, okay? If a family of four walks in with a god of leaders, say, and their bill's a hundred bucks, well, they got this in there, Pope County, that's a hundred dollar economic impact to Pope County. We'll start with, out of that hundred, about seventy-five dollars of that are going to pay like their food service vendors, that goes out of camp, you know, they gotta pay for their meat, their bread, you know, anything to deliver, that immediately leaves the camp, okay? Then, they figure the sales tax in this, ten percent, which the county gets two point seven five, uh, the other seven go straight to Nashville, we don't see. But these two hundred and forty-one thousand, that's like the most inflated, I, you know, we get these numbers all the time, twenty-seven million, Pope County, uh, two hundred and forty-one thousand, Chris won't mention, you know, that is literally the craziest, most misleading something I've ever heard in my life. And what they do, they're like to use color system, they'll blow these numbers out there, and then everybody in the county asks us, what does the two hundred and forty-one thousand? And there is no two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
We don't understand that.
Oh, yeah, but it's like the most deceiving, these numbers they always throw out, and uh, I just, you know, hope the public realizes, like we do, because they learn those, what y'all do with that two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars? But in theory, there is no two hundred and forty-one thousand, so, uh.
So don't come asking what we did with it.
Yeah.
There was a lady, and I don't remember what bit, I couldn't hear her really good, but she was a, and said a couple of thousand.
Couple thousand is what the small business seen that day, and that's true, you know, our small businesses, like Greg said, our small businesses are gonna see, well, not excuse that one bit, but it's like Greg said, well, Pope County government is not doing that, that's wrong.
No, I mean, come on.
That's, that's the impact, that's the way you can
The family's not gonna say that, it's just a business of citizens.
Yeah, the impact, which, yeah, I mean, and I'm, yeah, I get that too, I'm
I mean, I understand that, because it is a slaving It's not just him, it's anybody that pulls the money, it's gonna use the highest level.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, as long as everybody, you know, I just, yeah, as long as we try to make that clear, that does come, that does come to our business.
I do prefer, I do prefer. Six o'clock.
A lady wrapped back in the corner, what's that? Yes, go ahead.
I just have a quick question for our service. Um, the environmental impact study that you talk about, um, is that submitted with the form, or the application by the rally people, and then evaluated by the Forest Service? Or is that something that the Forest Service creates themselves?
So in this case in particular, the Forest Service will create it ourselves.
Okay, so they haven't submitted anything considering what they, they consider the impact?
That's correct. What they have submitted to us is the activity they would like to do, the places they would like to do it, so that our team can then analyze what the potential impacts of that activity would be.
Okay, who makes the final decision on whether that permit gets signed off?
I do.
Phillip here, Paul. Well, they don't actually, and, 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 but, and that was what happened out of the meeting the other day, somebody asked, and then it was like, so, I'm just saying, it was like, so, and everybody, you know, getting a hold of him, and duh, 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 and I'm sitting there thinking to myself, Phillip, when I've been talking since you first came in, and I appreciate that, but what makes it so hard is, is our contact players that are here, and that are here, and it's gonna have an interruption in their way of life, and they're not, it's not being communicated to them. Now, when you've got the old people in the, in the mountains that comes to the offer, basically, fear them, because they've heard all the things, like they said, they've heard all of this stuff, and you sit here and you're telling them to retire.
Rob, I have one more point I'd like to make. Um, I know you said, um, there, because of the forest roads, and most of us know them, um, the excessive speed of these race cars is going to detract from the fact that there can't be staging areas throughout those, those parts of the, the forest. Um, I just wanna make a point, what would the draw be for spectators? I mean, they talk about all these spectators coming in, but if the Forest Service roads aren't good for them to spectate from, I mean, I don't understand where the draw would be, because they're not gonna be able to watch the race.
So that would be a question I think you would have to ask the folks that are asking to promote the event. Part of their request did, um, specifically identify some spectator areas within the forest, which is one of the things that our team is evaluating now. So for example, what would be the effects of up to X number of people walking in the woods in a specific location? They identified those sites in their request, so that then we can have our botanists, our archaeologists, et cetera, take a look at that area specifically.
Okay, well, also, not only environmentally, but shall I say, safety wise, do they also evaluate that?
So part, that will be provided by the promoter, they've got an extensive safety plan, they will have to provide as part of the permit, that then again, we will evaluate, and I will coordinate with the local EMA, ex, subject matter experts essentially, to verify if what we're looking at, if what they have provided for a safety plan is sufficient, as part of the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, guys, we're gonna bring the budget, then, uh, back up about We've got the answer for us.
I don't know if I got the answer, but the, uh, the four forty-one transfer one, one forty-three is the fund, but four forty-one is the transfer.
Okay.
That was, they, this company did, uh, they moved the money from their, their general over and put it into the, uh, Food Service, because the Food Service will be in the red paper, and it needs to be passed, but I guess before next week. Uh, but it is going into the Food Service.
So is this amendment one forty-one, or is it one forty-three?
It appears, I mean, what he said, it would be the one forty-three, Food Service coming from
Well, that's, looking at it, I would assume this is an amendment from one forty-three, that it shows transfer kind of in from one forty-one.
Yeah, right.
But is there a one for one forty-one that we need to approve, that they approved it on their next one?
That's, that's the only thing he gave, was that this one's the one that needs to prove, so that they have the money. Now, I don't know if they're gonna do a second amendment, but they're moving the funds, I don't know, solid first.
So that means the kids wouldn't be So that means the kids wouldn't be
But it does say in the front, it's, uh, I can't find it.
It does say, so I guess I can, that's
It says Food Service on the front, they later
Well, you can approve it, and then if they get the audit kind of for not doing a bunch for one thirty more, I mean, that doesn't fall on us, so, that's on them.
All right, give me a motion, a second.
Make a motion.
Second, second.
We should get some, we should ready. Grab me out. Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Gillian Morgan?
Yes.
All right, we've got just a few minutes, anything else, anybody needs to say? Yes, sir?
May, may I just make one point of clarification? Um, the analysis that we're completing right now, when they paid the cost recovery for it on February the fourteenth, that started a timeline for us to complete that analysis, and we've got ninety days from then to complete it. So I just wanna clarify that we are right smack dab in the middle of that analysis process, um, which is the environmental side and the public comment side.
So Phillip, y'all just repairing the Sign of Branch right now, putting new tiles and things in there, putting a lot of rock, I really don't appreciate that at all, and not for them to be on those roads, our buyers are back, it's just out
Especially the bad as roads have been, and Charles knows, Shane knows, and we're finally getting them fixed, you know, and you're lucky, if you're saying the roads in worse shape than what they are, they're having been last couple of years, they're terrible.
I, I'll just say, I, we've got a really talented group of engineers that are working really, really hard to try to get that stuff, and they're looking at additional ways through the emergency roads for, emergency federally owned roads through our folks at the big storm events, so they're doing a good job trying to get things, and, and a lot of things are about to happen here.
We're finally getting all the roads fixed, after five years, they've been just terrible, and it's a struggle getting over all the spaces again, as long as we wait to get them fixed, you know, that's Yeah, that's a lot of what I'm fearing, believe, you know, they can't believe, you know.
So I, I would just say, when the public comment notice comes out, that's the kind of things that, you know, I think's important for folks, for our stakeholders to communicate.
I'm just glad when you're right here, yes, ma'am.
Um, I am on the, uh, Springtown Community Support Group, and four of them are there, and our last meeting, it was brought up, you know, we, we are just in support of the fire station, Station Four, um, what is going on with the station in O'Quoy? Well, we, we received some money for it, it's just been kinda sitting there, so that came up with our fire department, and they wanted me to ask one of them at this meeting.
Uh, it's being finished at this time.
Is there like a protected date for that? Because it's been, it's been getting finished for a while now.
All we've got now is, uh, about, what, two hours of skid steer work.
On the front.
We got it finished last month, the whole inside, the left and scene, the major set, we need about two hours of skid steer work, and, uh, load it grab, and that's it.
And one more thing on, on Springtown side, um, you, all you environmentalists, they're in conjunction with the Forest Service, this weekend is the trash pickup on Saturday, so I hope to see you guys there, uh, helping the Forest Service in conjunction with the Springtown Community Support Group, PWRA, so grab a trash bag and clean up around the housey.
And Brooks, I've got a man, just wanna contact you on that skid steer work, uh, this was
Yes, sir.
How many people are there in universal ways, and, let me, I wanna clarify something on the waste contract, I let that postponed tonight, but is it contingent of this commission that you all are currently not under contract?
Yes.
For waste hauling?
Yes.
And so who's been doing it for the last six months?
You have.
And who's been getting paid for it?
You have, just like if I get my yard mowed.
Okay.
If it's because of my yard, I pay you.
Can I?
I can stop him at any time.
Can I just, well, but you, that's not what your contract says.
Yeah, we have no contract. Y'all never provided one that was approved by
Your bid patent, your bid patent, is the contract?
No, sir, that's not, that's a
Okay, that's the term, is in it.
It's his bid patent. To be
Robbie did not, he did not
To be approved by our attorney, is exactly
Robbie did deliver the contract to us, he asked us to deliver the contract.
Y'all were supposed to deliver
Yeah, yeah, y'all, yeah, you better
I'd like to, just one of the things, just so y'all are aware, uh, forgiveness, the commission, the state, you know, Whitewater Group Committee was, uh, requested eighteen cent a head for last year's rafters, if they did approve it today, twenty-four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, if I see.
Very good, thank you, sir, that's a little bit worth everybody, which is a good thing.
That'll be the money from last year.
But let's not forget, if that river was not deemed like it is, what we could be getting. So, and so everybody keep that in mind, and that's not nothing against a rafter, before that starts in, the rafting companies are always getting bombarded for that. What I've tried to say, and we'll say it real quick, and I'll shut up, if you go to Disney World and that ticket's a hundred dollars, and, and then they say it's five dollars amusement tax, I bet you there ain't one person out of ten million that will turn around and leave.
He never met my wife.
Okay, Tom, but anyway, but that's what I've always said, if the rafting companies are charging forty, fifty, or sixty, and we can get an extra five dollars a head, two dollars a head, for the people going down, of what the rafting companies need to survive and make their expenses, nobody's not gonna go down that river for that two dollars. And, but we were deemed it was a navigable river, and that's why we cannot get it. I wanna see a motorboat go up that river, but anyway.
You don't say that, you're not even living.
It wasn't good, but anyway, but so we're happy with what we did, but that river is, could be our livelihood for our school so much that this county needs, and we can't get it because of a judge that ruled us, ruled that, no. Yeah, and so we can't charge any type of amusement tax, or even sales tax, is that correct? On the tickets? So a lot of people don't know that.
So you're gonna back the court again?
Yeah, I mean, I, I tell you, I mean, it, it, it hits under my skin, and it, like I say, I'm not, this is nothing to do with our outfitters, nothing. I'm happy for them, I wanted to make all the money they can, I support them, but you're not gonna turn around for, you know, anything.
I'm gonna piggyback off, just a, just a tad bit of that, so, I'm gonna work with the chamber to host a budget class, because several people in the community, but we have several new ones, I don't really understand the whole budget process, I think there's a lot of miscommunication about what revenues we get in, and how those numbers are reflected, and how they're generated, and how we get that, so, I will let, you know, when that is
So the public don't get misled, they think that we get this great big bunch of money out tourism, off the rivers, and, oh
We could be getting a whole
Yeah, and you don't, that just needs to be clarified.
Anyways, I'll let you know when it is.
Can I have a motion, stay, let's go home? Second, second.